10:16.
10:16, welcome to the continuation of our March Board of Managers meeting. To begin with, we'd like to do a roll call. We have a hybrid situation this morning because of the COVID pandemic. And on the advice of a physician, some managers may choose to attend in a hybrid method rather than being here in person. Mr. Smith, may we proceed with a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
Present.
Manager Duval.
Present.
Manager Cook.
Present.
Manager Ziegler.
Present.
President Pedersen.
Present. So now that we've done the roll call, the item that we have on the agenda that was left are the Resolutions 24-025 and 24-026. We would now entertain a motion in which to put these back on the action agenda.
Madam President, I move to move the resolutions back.
I'll second.
Thank you, Manager Duval and Manager Crafton. I'd like to have a vote on moving them back onto the action agenda, please.
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
So now that we've moved this back onto the action agenda, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Smith and over to Alex to give us a little chat about the two resolutions.
Madam President, I'll begin. The two resolutions we have before you allow you to acquire the Spring Road property in the Spring Road Conservation Project through a contract for deed arrangement. So Resolution 24-025 would approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for the Assignment of the Purchase Agreement and a promissory note with TDI Holdings, and a Seventh Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Carol Standall, that amendment placing the district in the position of purchaser, and a Contract for Deed with Carol Standall for the project that providing the short-term financing for the acquisition. And then Resolution 24-026 would have the District approving an agreement with the City of Eden Prairie regarding the deferral of special assessments on the property and approving an agreement of payment to the city. So on that latter resolution, we will, Mr. Selkey and I will provide an overview of the considerations involved in that. There may be some aspects of that matter that call for going into a closed session, and we will address that as we get there. So with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Selkey to address the items to be approved in the first resolution. And all of these documents are in your packet materials.
Good morning, Managers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. Apologies, I can't be there in person or in video, but this is Alex Selkey, Special Counsel of District from Bellegarde Spar, Special Real Estate Counsel. As Louis introduced, I will go over briefly the high-level terms of the contracts that are stated in the resolution, starting with the Contract for Deed. So the terms of the Contract for Deed that have been, that are presented to today are consistent with what was presented at the last meeting in term sheet form, with the exception of, I shouldn't say with the exception, and with the final interest rate agreed on by the parties or subject to your approval, 7%. I think we had a range in the term sheet. We were still negotiating that term. The final interest rate that Carol Standall was willing to agree to was 7%. So that is in the final Contract for Deed. Otherwise, it remains five years until maturity, interest-only payments beginning in the third quarter of 2024 until the Contract for Deed is paid off. And the final purchase price again is consistent with what was in the original packet, $5.4 million, $250,000 paid at closing for a down payment. The other, also discuss, I mentioned that there is a senior mortgage on the property at the last meeting that was on the term sheet. I didn't go into the details of that as much as perhaps I should have given the unique risk that that brings to this transaction. So let me just summarize a few general risks that come with the Contract for Deed, and then additional risks that come with a senior mortgage being on the property and how we've sought to mitigate some of those risks in the contract. So the first thing you should know about a Contract for Deed is unlike mortgage financing, it has a relatively short period for the district as the buyer, security defaults. It doesn't have a long redemption period like you would find in a mortgage. So it's used for circumstances like this where traditional financing isn't available and perhaps for bridge transactions to close before permanent financing is available. So under Minnesota statutes, if there's a default under the Contract for Deed by the buyer, there's only a 60-day cure right before the contract can be terminated. And the seller, Carol Standall in this instance, would be entitled to terminate the contract, retain the payments, and get the property back. So one way we've tried to mitigate that risk in this contract is, again, having interest-only payments. We've also added this, an additional 60-day cure period for all types of events of default. Going to the mortgage, it is, there is a level of risk taking a Contract for Deed subject to an existing mortgage. The existing, a couple scenarios that could come into play. Carol Standall could stop paying her mortgage payments, and the existing mortgagier could start foreclosure proceedings. The existing mortgagier could, for other reasons, accelerate the debt under the mortgage. For example, there, if they don't like this Contract for Deed, they could accelerate the mortgage for a lawful transfer by Carol Standall. We have through Carol's counsel, we have indicated, we have knowledge that the local representative of the mortgagier is aware of the transaction and is, doesn't have any objection to it. That doesn't mean that something could change in the future where, again, for non-payment or for other reasons, for any other default in the mortgage, that the lender could accelerate the mortgage, and then we'd have to deal with the mortgage. The current principal balance of the mortgage is $600,000 approximately. We received the payoff about a month ago, maybe more, in preparation of our initial closing date for this. So we have a relatively current payoff statement from the lender showing that the current balance is around $600,000. In Section 23 of the Contract for Deed, there are various rights for the district, contractual rights for the district to make direct payments on the mortgage, get information about the status of the mortgage, contractual prohibitions on Carol Standall, changing the terms of the mortgage, accruing more debt, changing interest rate, really anything that could have disadvantaged the district. The worst-case scenario, I suppose, if the mortgage did go into foreclosure, we have specific rights in that Section 23 where we can, we can direct, we can make a principal prepayment on the Contract for Deed and require that that payment be used to pay off the mortgage and obtain the satisfaction before closing. So there's, we've thought through that risk that I'm describing here, and those are the contractual mechanisms we've come up to try to mitigate that risk. There's a few practical considerations that we've discussed when thinking about this transaction. I, given the possible short term of this bridge financing, you know, the shorter the term of the Contract for Deed, the lower the risk. If permanent financing can be attained sooner rather than later, then the mortgage is paid off and it's, the risk is solved there. There's practical consideration of, one reason the mortgagier, existing mortgagier has indicated they don't have any issue with this transaction is it provides a new source of funds to make sure that debt is serviced. There's unlikely that a large bank, I believe it's BMO Harris who owns the mortgage currently, based on the real estate records, likely doesn't want, doesn't want to take the property by foreclosure. It's most likely the last thing they want to do. So providing these interest payments to Carol Standall definitely gives her more than enough money to service the debt in this interim period. There are a couple other, I'll pause there, and field any questions, or I can proceed to the other documents and take questions at the end.
Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
So is this opportunity, I didn't quite understand, is this opportunity for questions, comments, or not?
Yes.
And I'll, yeah.
Or do you want to finish, and I can go through it? I have a long list.
Manager Cook, yeah, why don't I finish, and we can take all comments at the end. Thanks for that suggestion.
And before, before you continue, you're feeding in and out a little bit on the audio. So I appreciate it if you could do your best to speak to the microphone. Thank you.
Let me make an adjustment here and try something new. Okay. Moving on, the balance of the documents are the promissory note, TDI, which, again, there's a payment due to them under the original contract terms. We're planning to, the district would pay $125,000 of that at closing and carry the balance on a promissory note of $250,000. One change from the term sheet that we looked at is that Trek has requested, and it's reflected in the current draft of the promissory note, interest-only payments on that debt starting in 2025, if closing hasn't occurred, or final financial closing hasn't occurred by then. Otherwise, the terms are consistent with the term sheet that we presented at the last meeting. The other two documents, the amendments, are administrative in nature. They're set up to be signed at a closing that document this financing structure to align with the current purchase contract and assignment contract. And lastly, is the agreement with the City of Eden Prairie, a payment agreement for the special assessments. Mr. Smith will talk about that in more detail after some discussion with the city, but otherwise, the terms of that remain the same. Interest at 6% on the approximately $275,000 of existing deferred special assessments that will be further deferred for two more years. Mr. Smith, do you want to proceed from there?
Madam President, just one further note on the agreement with Eden Prairie and the resolution. Eden Prairie has requested that the district indemnify the city and provide for defense in the event that there's any litigation involving the special assessments. And we can speak more to that as we move ahead.
Mr. Selkey, do you have anything to add?
No. I believe that summarizes the terms of the agreements and any deviations from what was presented in the term sheet.
Okay, thank you. Now, any questions or comments from the managers?
Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the introduction. I have a list here, so. So first question I have is the district under any obligation to agree to the proposed amendment?
Give that to Mr. Selkey.
Mr. Selkey, could you respond to that, please?
Is the district under any obligation to agree to the assignment and purchase agreement amendments that are presented? Is that the question?
That is the question.
No.
So then my next question is, does, you know, sometimes you call it Trek, sometimes you call it TDI, I don't know what to call it, but let's say TDI in the seller. Do they have any, and I'll say it this way, unconditional right to terminate the current or the purported current agreement?
We are currently within a cure period to get to closing. So their right to terminate, I did not, I do not have that date in mind, but it was 30 days after original closing date. So it's likely coming up at the end of April or early May.
Well, I would add to that, if you review my complaint filed with court and various other documents, I think it's clear from a reading of the purported agreement, and I say purported because I don't believe it's effective on that basis. I think it's pretty clear that there is no right on the part of the, neither the seller nor TDI to terminate this agreement. And thus, in my opinion, it is unnecessary to agree to any amendments until the issues set forth in the complaint have been resolved on that basis. So now move on to my, I made that statement, I'll move on to my next question. Have we received any financial statements regarding the seller?
Not that I am aware of. I'll defer to others if they have received such statements.
Okay, so to move, so is it fair to say we have no idea if the seller has the ability to pay the mortgage?
They have the ability based on the interest-only payments the district would make under the contract.
And, but they are under actually no obligation to make those payments, at least these be the district. Is that correct?
No, the Contract for Deed requires them to make those payments. It's a contractual obligation under the Contract for Deed.
So we're still stuck with the first mortgage. Is that correct?
Yes, the mortgage is not being paid off at the closing of the Contract for Deed. Section 23 of the Contract for Deed contains the various contractual rights that the district would have to do their best to ensure that the district, excuse me, the seller continued to service that mortgage and some remedies and rights in the event that she did not.
Well, you know, that and, as I always say, what is it, 285 will buy you a cup of coffee at Starbucks or your other favorite, you know, establishment. Now, it's my understanding that we managers have fiduciary obligations to act in the best interest of our constituents. Is that correct? If that's not for you, then maybe Mr. Smith.
I'll defer to Mr. Smith on that question.
Madam President.
Yes.
I think it's a rhetorical question, but I guess I would refer to your oaths as the duty to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the state of Minnesota and to perform the duties to the best of your judgment and ability.
Thank you.
Well, I think that pretty much encompasses, but I think there's others, so we don't have to go into debate now. But, you know, we'll certainly cover that in the litigation if we know how to. The reason I raise the question is, is I'd like to know, I mean, I don't know if any prudent person would go enter into an obligation to pay money and have their, whatever they pay, subject to possibly losing it pursuant to a first mortgage. And I say that because I think we have a fine example in the news of the former president trying to raise money on real estate. It's just not always feasible. So we run a significant risk that, you know, the district that went through with this could end up losing the property and not be able to redeem it because we, at least in my opinion, have significant restrictions on money that we can raise, et cetera, and payments we can make, et cetera. A number of these items are set forth, obviously, in my complaint. So I don't, I don't know of, well, maybe you would, but I would never buy a piece of property subject to a first mortgage, you know, on that basis without better rights than are set forth in the proposed Contract for Deed, especially when we're not obligated to buy this property. And contrary to what I think a proper read of the contract says, that neither the seller nor TDI have any outs under the purported agreement. And I think that was stated in court and is clearly set forth in the complaint. So going forward with a contract like this would not be in our best interest because the district has the ability, in my opinion, to sit on its hands until the issues regarding the purchase of this property set forth in the lawsuit, you know, have been resolved. And besides that, why would anybody want to take an unnecessary risk to purchase property subject to a first mortgage, especially when we have no guarantees that we will be able to get permanent financing on that basis? And clearly, our plan doesn't provide for that. So I have some further questions in those statements, more or less, but, and you've, one of those was the difference between the summary and what you presented. I appreciate that already caving that. So I want to make sure that all the managers read both the purported agreement and these purported, these suggested amendments.
Any other comments, Manager Cook?
I'm not finished, thank you. So I take that as a no. Then, I guess I would say my final comment is, is that, at least in my opinion, I certainly see why the City of Eden Prairie wants defense and indemnification because, in my view, it is illegal to defer special assessments. I think the statute is quite clear. I think this proposal is but a game to try to get around a very clear statute. And I am certain that Eden Prairie would be included in litigation over this. Secondly, again, since there is no need for us to enter in this, I don't know why TDI and the sellers would want to engage in this and take additional payments. You know, I certainly wouldn't do it because I wouldn't want to risk of being involved in litigation regarding taking money improperly or illegally and having to basically, in the vernacular, cop it back up at the end of the day. So I see no reason to agree to these amendments. Nothing's going to change. As is stated in, you know, my complaint and the arguments before the court, this, this body always has the ability to condemn the property if it need be. And, you know, in my view, the value of that property has already been set. First, at a number by an appraisal, but more importantly, by an agreement between two parties. And I think most people would be familiar with the termination of fair market value, realize that the agreement between the parties is, is of, I guess, most significance or highest priority. So, and that, based on conclude saying, I don't see any, again, no reason to pass this resolution. District is in the driver's seat. You know, we can't be forced to close and they can't remove it, or they can't terminate the agreement under the closed current agreement. I think this would only be leading to more litigation and unnecessary litigation. And so I don't think we should be approving this. I think it would be imprudent and given the fact that, you know, all the managers have, are at least now on notice of these issues, I think moving it forward would be an intentional violation of your duties. And it would be questioned as to whether or not the managers would be entitled to defense or on or indemnification. So at this point, I'll yield back.
Thank you, Manager Cook. Do any other managers have questions or comments?
President, I guess my only comment would be I'm ready to move forward. I feel all the bases has been covered thoroughly. I think we're in good shape.
Thank you, Manager Crafton.
Madam President.
Yes.
I would just note, if there's anyone else in the audience or online that wants to make any comments, now might be an appropriate time for that.
Great. Do we have anybody that would like to make an additional comment or comments, online or here in person? Seeing none, I think at this point, we probably could look for a motion, correct?
Madam President, there is the one aspect of the agreement with the city and that resolution.
Yes.
In which Manager Cook has made references to the existing litigation, litigation as well as threatened litigation. And I think we would recommend a brief closed session among the four managers to discuss that litigation and threatened litigation and receive advice of counsel regarding that. So that would be a suggested motion.
So I'm looking for a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Crafton, second. So let's hear a roll call vote on that.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Yes.
A comment, if I understood, Mr. Smith's proposal would be to exclude me to the extent that this would involve any discussion of litigation with the City of Eden Prairie. It would not be appropriate to exclude me on that basis. And so therefore, I would, I object to excluding me with respect to any discussion of any potential litigation with the City of Eden Prairie, given that they are a different party and there is no current litigation in between them. If the, want to have a closed session regarding the current litigation, which not currently includes, excuse me, you know, the district and Administrator Jeffrey, then although I still think I still represent the district, I understand the potential of the conflict issue. And I will agree without waiving my arguments that, you know, the other four managers could meet in a closed session to discuss that litigation, but not any potential litigation against the City of Eden Prairie or the terms of any agreement regarding indemnification.
Madam President. Yes, just to be clear, our recommendation is that the four managers go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the existing litigation with Mr. Cook as well as his threatened litigation in his letter addressed to Eden Prairie, the Standalls, and TDI. And it is our judgment that with that threat, there's a reason for the board to receive confidential legal advice concerning that threatened litigation and strategy to respond to that litigation. So we respectfully disagree with Manager Cook's assessment of that matter.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, Madam President.
Yes.
I just think it's important to put on the record that I disagree with Mr. Smith. I mean, he's actually stated the reason why I don't believe his statement applies. This has to do with Eden Prairie. We do not represent Eden Prairie. Eden Prairie was sued, does not have any direct or necessary import on the district, at least not at this time. So I'll yield back.
So at this time, I'm looking to have a vote on going to the closed session, please.
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, are we all here? Yes, I believe we are. So we are back into open session again.
Madam President, the first item then before the board would be Resolution 24-025, approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for Assignment of Purchase Agreement and Promissory Note. Note with TDI Holdings, the Seventh Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with Carol Standall and the Contract for Deed with Carol Strandle.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam President, I move to accept Resolution 24-025.
A second.
Thank you, Manager Duval and Manager Crafton. Do we have any further discussion before a vote?
Madam President.
Yes, Manager Cook.
As for purposes of the record, I repeat everything that I've stated before. Furthermore, I think it's important to state that with this money of 5.775 million dollars is, as I've stated before, better spent in fixing our creeks on the projects that have been on the tenure plan for years instead of buying property that has no water management issues. So I think it not only is, is likely illegal, but it's also imprudent and not in the best interest. And I would refer everybody to the article regarding Minnehaha Creek and its attempted work to work on their creeks, using the word neglected, I believe, was the, was the headline on, on that basis. So we should be aligning ourselves with that kind of thought process that we devote our time, attention and dollars to fixing creeks that we know have issues instead of buying land that has no water management issues and does not rank in priority according to the Minnesota rules. And I yield back.
Do we have any other comments from any other managers?
Oh, one other, excuse me, Madam President, really short.
Yes.
The other thing is, is I really have to object the fact that we are discussing this very important issue on a Tuesday morning when most of our meetings are in the evening and most of our constituents are working. I think that this is, this shows, I guess, a disrespect for our constituents on such an important matter. And, you know, I, I could say more with why I think maybe it's happening, but I'll refrain at this time. I yield back.
Thank you. I believe we're at the vote. Mr. Smith?
On Resolution 24-025, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, secondly, we are on to Resolution 24-026.
And Madam President, one note on that resolution. I think as I turn to that language, as we noted earlier, the city has requested that the district defend and indemnify it in the event of any litigation concerning this special assessment matter. And so we would recommend that you amend the resolution language to read that the Board of Managers hereby approves the proposed agreement for deferred special assessments with the city of Eden Prairie, comma, subject to the condition of district defense and indemnification of the city on terms negotiated by legal counsel and further authorizes the president to execute the agreement with non-substantive changes on advice of legal counsel.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve this with the change?
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Point of order, excuse me, point of order.
Yes, Manager Cook.
I don't believe that the proposed amendment to the resolution has been duly brought forth for approval.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, there was a motion, motion was seconded, there's language written made by counsel and nothing, no action has been taken with respect to that language.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, I understood the motion to be to adopt the resolution with that change, which would be in order.
What I heard. It's what I said.
If, if the motion had been made earlier simply to adopt it without that change, then you would need to go through an amendment process.
Right.
Madam President?
Yes.
That was my understanding and seconding.
Thank you.
Same.
Thank you.
Understanding.
So I believe at this point, we can proceed with the vote.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Well, I believe with that course of action, I believe we are at the end of our meeting unless anybody has anything else and we'll see you all on Thursday, 2 o'clock. So I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Manager Crafton, Manager Duval, thank you. May we have a vote, please?
On adjourning, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all very much for attending. Thank you for your time and attention.